Seconding of motions or general comments. To eliminate as much background audio as possible, I'd like to ask that the governing body members mute themselves when they are not speaking. All motions must be read again before a vote is taken. City Clerk Everly will do this for us this evening. All motions must dictate who has the signed documents or take binding action on behalf of the city. All votes will be handled by roll call, and I will move in a counterclockwise direction of normal member seating positions, starting with Councilperson Claussen and ending with Councilman Campbell. With that being said, we will move to our agenda. And the first thing I will ask is, is there any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, staff has no changes to present this evening unless there's any from the governing body.
Hearing nobody from the governing body will move on to the consent agenda, and I'll ask for approval of it.
George Torres here. Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda as prepared and submitted, I would make a motion that it be approved as submitted.
Ed Campbell seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I guess Jamie's gonna clarify that.
We have a motion by George Torres to approve the consent agenda for April 13, 2020, as submitted, with a second by Councilmember Campbell.
Okay, you've heard the motion and the second. We will begin the roll call vote, and I'll start with Councilman, Councilperson Claussen.
Councilwoman Claussen, aye, or aye.
Councilman Farmer.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
And Councilman Campbell.
Aye.
Well, you've heard the motion and all the votes. Everybody's in favor, so that passes unanimously. We'll move on to unfinished business, and we've got one item there. It's a public hearing for 204 Main. It's a distressed property hearing, and I believe Ethan is gonna ask the council to continue that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, to inform the council and those that have joined us in the meeting, we have received the quitclaim deed. I got that this morning, so we are working with the courthouse's changed operations to get that to the register of deeds to be filed. We did double-check the dates. We think we're good to go, and this should be good, but hopefully, just to allow adequate time, we're asking to continue this till our first meeting in May, and we are confident that we should hopefully have everything back and settled and be able to close this out at that meeting.
This is Councilman Farmer, and I would make a motion to continue the public hearing regarding 204 Main to May 11, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. meeting.
This is Councilwoman Claussen, and I'll second that.
Got the motion and the second. We'll rely on Clerk Everly for review.
We got a motion by Councilmember Farmer to continue the public hearing regarding 204 Main to May 11, 2020, at 7:00 p.m., and a second by Councilmember Claussen.
Yeah, we've got the motion and the second on the floor. We'll begin the roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Claussen.
Aye.
Councilman Farmer.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
And Councilman Campbell.
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously. Now, we're going to move on to new business, and the first item is consideration of public health appointments, Officer and City Board of Health. And Ethan, I'm gonna turn that to you.
Thank you. These are annual appointments that we do in May. Per city code, the health officer must be a board-certified medical doctor, and Dr. Doyle Detweiler has graciously agreed to continue serving in that role for us for another year. In addition to that health officer, there's also the City Board of Health, which is comprised of two governing body members who would meet with the health officer if needs be, and the mayor is recommending appointment of himself and Councilmember Claussen to serve on that, and those are one-year appointments as well.
Mr. Mayor, George Torres here. If there are no questions or discussion, I would make a motion to appoint Dr. Detweiler to the City, as a City Health Officer, and also to appoint Councilperson Claussen and Mayor Travis as Board of Health members.
Councilman Campbell seconds. Okay, we've got the motion and the second. We'll rely on City Clerk Everly for the review.
We have a motion to appoint Dr. Detweiler as City Health official, and Denise Claussen and Dennis Travis as representatives to the Board of Health for a term of one year by Councilmember Torres, seconded by Councilmember Campbell.
Got the motion and the second on the floor, and we'll call for the roll call vote. We'll start with Councilwoman Claussen.
I believe I need to abstain from this vote.
Oh, yeah, true. So we'll skip you, and we'll go to Councilman Farmer. And Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Campbell.
Aye.
That passes by four votes, with Councilwoman Claussen abstaining for obvious reasons. We'll move on to the next item, and it's consideration of a dragon grant request, and we'll let Ethan tell us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, in your packets, you saw a dragon grant request from the neighbors.
You're muted, Ethan.
Sorry, I thought that would hold on. The neighbors pantry has applied. They're gonna replace the awning over the pantry side to match what the awning looks like on the store side, and they have asked for $5,000 for that project, which is the amount we have left in dragon grant funds this year of the original budgeted amount. So we are suggesting or recommending, from the staff perspective, that that request for the dragon grant be approved.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Campbell. If there are no further discussion on the topic, I'd make a motion to approve the $5,000 dragon grant to the neighbor's store.
I would make, I would second that. And we've got the motion and the second to approve this dragon grant on the floor. We'll ask for a review by Clerk Everly.
We have a motion to approve a $5,000 dragon grant to neighbor's store by Councilmember Campbell, with second by Councilmember Farmer.
Got the motion and the second. We'll begin the roll call vote, and we'll start with Councilwoman Claussen.
Aye.
Councilman Farmer.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
And Councilman Campbell.
Aye.
Thank you, council. That dragon grant passes unanimously. The next item under new business is consideration of street sweeping proposals, and Ethan will bring us up to date on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the packet, council, you had two quotes for street sweeping service. One is from the company that the city has utilized for many years, and then one is from Clean Right, which is a new vendor, but was recommended by some other cities in the area that also contract out street sweeping. The major difference you can see is Kansas Clean Properties is submitting basically $35 per cubic yard of waste that would be hauled away, and based on their previous sweeps of the town, they think that that would be around $12,700 total, or about 363 cubic yards. Clean Right's quote is a flat fee of $13,000 to cover the work in the city regardless of how much they would remove.
George Torres here. Ethan, in the past, we've all have seen that there, we have not been real pleased with some of the services we've received from our previous provider, and you've been given recommendations to this, from Clean Right. What do the other cities have to say about them?
They're very satisfied with the performance they do. Clean Right, when we talk to them, one of their clients is actually like McConnell Air Force, so they're very happy, touting, you know, the work they've done on, in those other cities, and it's just like Kansas Clean Properties of, they're also, you know, recommended by the cities that use them, so.
This is Councilman Farmer, and we've, we've had the original company for several years and tried them, and as Ethan has said, they've come back and they've corrected problems that they've had in the past, but I would say, for the price comparison, I think we need to look at a new company, not insulting the old company, but looking at a new company just to have something to compare to.
This is George Torres. For citizens out there, we're looking at a $300 spread to try the new company, and I think consistently over the last couple of years, we've had problems with, you know, residents complaining about the quality of the street sweeping job, so I'm inclined to think with Councilman Farmer, for $300, I would say, let's give the other company a try and see how it turns out, just by discussion here.
Councilman Campbell agrees. I think we've had a lot of problems over the last couple of years with our existing sweeping. It's been complained by people on Main Street as well as residents, and I think if we can try another company and see if the results are improved, we'd be better off doing that.
I would agree.
Mayor Travis here, and it certainly wouldn't hurt to encourage a little bit of competition, and we will go whichever way the council would like to go on this one.
So, Councilman Farmer, and I'd make a motion to approve a quote for street sweeping based on council input and preference, which it sounds to me that it would be towards Clean Right.
Mike, seconds.
Wallace, did you have something to say?
No, I was just trying to second it, sorry.
We've got the motion and the second on the floor. We'll go to Clerk Everly for the review.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Farmer to approve a quote for street sweeping from Clean Right for an amount not to exceed $13,000, with a second by Councilwoman Wallace.
Okay, we've got the motion and the second on the floor, and now I will begin the roll call vote, and we'll start with Councilwoman Claussen.
Aye.
Councilman Farmer.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
And Councilman Campbell.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. We will move on to our next item, which is consideration of public works equipment purchase. Ethan's gonna tell us what maintenance department would like to have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council can see in the packet, Public Works is seeking to purchase a hydro excavator, specifically a Vactron LP 573 XDT. This allows them to basically, you know, dig around with water. The main reason this kind of got on the Public Works radar as equipment that would be needed is we've actually had twice since my time with the city where we have, through the process of excavating with backhoe or even hand digging, cut underground electric or fiber optic lines, and those get very expensive. So this is an option to help around those that helps ensure, doesn't completely eliminate, but it definitely helps them be able to dig more safe around those areas that might have underground, and as we've seen, fiber and underground electric continue to be the way the industry is moving, so we're only gonna see more underground cables and wires in the right-of-way that we're trying to dig around. In addition, there are advantages to that. It can be used to help clean out stormwater boxes. Sorry, I'm looking at Pat to give me some other examples here.
Well, if you'd like me to enlighten you, Ethan, one, one good example that I've seen with it is it can be used to clean out meter pits and stuff, and I remember when the water table was pretty high last spring, and maintenance was trying to go around with a pump and pump those all out, and this would certainly make that a lot, lot easier of a job.
Meter pits is, is another good option.
Councilman Torres here have had opportunity to visit with the crews in Heston. They've got one, and they use it all the time. It's a highly versatile tool, and again, it's very gentle on underground services, so I'm in favor of this product, this piece of equipment. With that, I'd make a motion, oh gosh dang, my screen just went blank, I'm sorry, I don't have my information in front of me. I would make a motion to approve this hydro excavator. Yes?
No, I was gonna make a motion while you were looking, but that's.
Okay, make a motion to approve this hydro excavator for an amount not to exceed $51,500.
Let's go ahead and make that for Ethan, and you want to.
Yeah, if we could.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We want the amount to be $55,000, not to exceed.
Okay, my stuff came back up here, I'm sorry. The hydro excavator with the amount not to exceed $55,000, and for City Manager Reimer and City Superintendent Adams to sign any necessary documents.
Councilman Campbell, seconds.
Okay, we've got the motion and the second on the floor. We'll have Clerk Everly review it.
Motion to approve the purchase of a Vactron LP 573 XDT hydro excavator for an amount not to exceed $55,000 from Vermeer Great Plains, and authorization for City Manager Reimer and City Superintendent Adams to sign any necessary documents by Councilmember Torres, with a second by Councilmember Campbell.
Got the motion and the second clearly defined. We'll begin our roll call vote, and we'll start with Councilwoman Claussen.
Aye.
Councilman Farmer.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Nay, for reasons discussed with the mayor.
Okay. Councilman Torres.
Aye.
And Councilman Campbell.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes four to one. Next item on our agenda is a discussion of memorandum of understanding with the City of Sedgwick, and Ethan will bring us up to par on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the packet, it's a memorandum of understanding between the City of Halsted and City of Sedgwick. This would be to utilize one of our certified wastewater operators to serve as a consultant and in a consulting role for the operations of their wastewater treatment plant, as they are currently without a certified operator, which they have to have per KDHE standards. This base MOU is for a six-month period, although it can be extended. Part of it is that Sedgwick will continue to work on getting their own staff certified. The MOU does spell out the compensation for our employees' time and travel expenses to go there. We'll stress that we have made or written this agreement, and the City of Sedgwick understands that this is a consulting, and we largely expect their staff to continue the day-to-day operation of their plant, but anything that requires that certified operator to sign off on or that would be our employee doing so on their behalf, and visiting with City Superintendent Adams, we believe that we can get this to a set schedule so it interferes minimally with our overall operations of our public works department.
And it's my understanding, Ethan, that you would actually like to table this and give Sedgwick's council a chance to meet about it, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. We have sent this to their city administrator and legal counsel for review, but they have not yet presented it formally to their governing body, not anticipating that we'll see a lot of requested changes, but to give them a chance to at least put their eyes on it, we would recommend tabling this for final decision until our next meeting on the 27th.
This is Councilmember Sam Farmer, and if there are no further comments or questions, I'd make a motion to table for further action on the memorandum of understanding with the City of Sedgwick until the April 27, 2020 meeting for further discussion and consideration.
Before the second, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Does, does this agreement put us at any liability or risk?
That's my question.
Or the City of Sedgwick, for our services performed?
Ethan?
Um, no, the way we sent that to City Attorney Jantsch to weigh in on, and he believed it was written of the, you know, intent that it minimizes any liability to us, you know, or any liability claim against the employee.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I got you, Brad.
I think I have it muted, because I'm sitting here speaking every once in a while, and everybody's ignoring me, which I'm used to in some instances, but not all.
You have the floor.
I spoke to Ethan about it, and I know that that was a concern and probably one that would be raised here, which was intuitive. I had a lengthy conversation with Joe Turner about that and said the city's position, Halsted, and meaning, was that they really didn't want to get into a situation where we were in any way, shape, or form impacting their protocol or their process, that our function only would be to lend, in the case of an emergency circumstance, in the absence of someone on the, in the employ of the City of Sedgwick directly, to be able to provide that certification as needed, and that all of their normal processes would be theirs to maintain, and the city would take no liability for that. He agreed completely with that. He said their only function in this is to have us serve as the backup, that they were not expecting anything more from us, or, or anyone that we had go over there to take on any liability in terms of their system, and if it malfunctioned in some way, basically we're just overseeing and saying, yep, those readings are correct, or whatever it may be, in the, to the extent that they needed that kind of assistance.
Well, and Brad, you've got it built in there where it basically is gonna be a hold harmless for our operator if they're not operating within the bounds of their permit for KDHE, correct?
That's correct, and that language for indemnification purposes, as well as hold harmless, can be strengthened if we need it. I thought what we'd do is let them look at it and make sure that conceptually their council, and they will be, are in agreement, and then if for any reason we felt that that were necessary, we could still add to that if everyone needed it in some way.
Okay, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with you and Ethan reviewing this, but council, you will have another opportunity to review this, because all we're asking for is to table this tonight. We did wanna bring it up to make you aware of it, just so you'd know what was coming. Is there any further discussion? Well, I believe we have a motion on the floor. I'd be looking for a second at this point.
With that, Councilman Campbell, seconds.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for this issue. We'll ask for the review from Clerk Everly.
Motion by Councilmember Farmer to table further action on the memorandum of understanding with the City of Sedgwick until the April 27, 2020 meeting for further discussion and consideration, with a second by Councilmember Campbell.
Okay, we will begin with the roll call vote, and I'll start with Councilwoman Denise Claussen.
Aye.
Councilman Farmer.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
And Councilman Campbell.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously, and that item will be tabled. The next item on, under new business is discussion of COVID-19 community relief, and I'll let Ethan have the floor on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just to speak with the council to see, as we know, COVID-19 is having severe economic implications for both small businesses as well as individuals. As the agenda memo said, we're kind of in a unique position to be able to offer assistance, be it, it can take many forms, you know, we can operate by supporting, you know, local nonprofits and, like Neighbors or the Community Foundation. We have things we could look at as far as utility relief, you know. Last month, we continued to assess latent reconnect fees as normal, even though we're not doing turnoffs in this in, as far as per the governor's executive order, and we had administratively made that decision as well before that order came down, but it's kind of getting what your guys' thoughts were, if you wanna look at anything or have us dive deeper into maybe trying to find some sort of relief for residents or businesses or both. You know, I mean, it's, the financial cost can vary depending on what you're talking about doing or things of that nature, so it's really just a discussion at this point.
Campbell, my, my discussion with City Manager Reimer earlier today, when we discussed this a little bit, I told him I was gonna let him use his discretion if he seemed something that he felt the city should get involved in and do, that at that time, I want him to bring that issue to the council. Until then, I think the door's wide open to interpretation and where things are headed, and I just don't know if there's anything definite that we could put together tonight, but it would be something that I would untie Ethan's hands a little bit to look and see if he thought we should do something, and then bring those ideas back to the council. That's my thoughts on it, and I'll, I'll let the rest of you speak as you'd like.
Well, this is Councilman Farmer, and I spoke with Ethan a little bit, my thoughts on this today, and we're all for helping everyone, and I think as far as the City of Halsted, the City of Halsted in its entirety has done a lot to assist people in this situation. I think with federal funding that's being sent out and also state aid, I believe I go along with you, Dennis, to allow Ethan the discretion, say, on bills and so forth, to potentially help where he sees fit. To make a broad sweeping effort, I think it'd be a little bit premature. If we did, I would be more inclined to lean towards helping groups that help the City of Halsted. As an example, the foundation, Community Foundation, the neighbor's store that puts everything back into the City of Halsted. That's the only thoughts I have on it.
I'd make, Councilman Campbell, I'd make a comment, pretty much in agreement with Sam and with you, Mayor, is I think any special requests could come through Neighbors or through the Community Foundation as the first point of contact before coming to the city for us to be able to reach out and assist.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
This is Councilwoman Clausen. I agree, I agree with Sam. Did I run over you, Mike? I'm sorry.
You're okay.
Okay, um, I don't think we can, can do anything broad sweeping or very general. I think we need to look at it on a case-by-case basis. I think we need to continue with the no shut-offs for utilities, um, from the city, and just really look at it on a case-by-case basis. We do have a lot of people that are fortunate in town that continue to work from, um, at home, um, or able to work, you know, from home. Um, and I know we have some that have been laid off in our community, or at least put on furlough. Um, but I think we just look at it case by case and, and, uh, let the, the, let Ethan and his staff um, kind of make those determinations as they, as they need.
Mike, would you like to add to it?
No, I was just gonna say that I do like the idea of, uh, you know, of us utilizing the Community Foundation and Neighbors. Uh, that way they can, they can kind of manage that and come to us and let us know exactly what the needs of the community are, and then we can come back and, you know, give Ethan that ability to be able to provide the emergency support, or if we need to come back to the governing body if it's a substantial amount. But I'm in agreement with that.
Well, Mr. Reimer, I believe you have your consensus. Keep your, keep your.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Does that need a motion, Dennis?
No, I think at this point, we were just looking for a consensus. And we'll just ask Ethan to continue to keep his finger on the pulse of the community, and and if a need comes up that he thinks that we can and should help, uh, he'll let us know, so. With that, we'll with that, we'll move on. Um, we have no executive session tonight, and, uh, under reports, uh, we'll start with the governing body, and the first thing we'll ask is are there any public comment, uh, City Clerk Everly that we need to bring up tonight?
No, there is not, Mr. Mayor.
Lynn, I have the joy of making a proclamation for Arbor Day. I've been looking forward to this ever since I won the election. Now, here goes. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Halsted has been recognized as a tree city USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. And now, therefore I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of the City of Halsted, hereby proclaim April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty as Arbor Day in the City of Halsted. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's community forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. dated this thirteenth day of April, two thousand twenty, Dennis Travis, Mayor. Here's our Arbor Day proclamation. I did plant four bushes over the weekend, so I feel like I've done my part. So now, continuing on reports, we will move to the City Manager for Ethan's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, all departments continue to work on delivering services while, um, adhering to guidelines as far as, uh, social distancing and, and minimizing the exposure to staff. Um, Halsted Fire EMAAS, uh, recently assisted on a silver alert call, uh, that ended with, uh, finding the individual. Uh, they've also been assisting with some controlled burns, um, in addition to just their normal, uh, run. They continue to try and find PPE for, uh, employees to respond to those medical calls. Uh, the, as far as in the administration and finance, uh, we are beginning to move through reconciliation and work with our auditors on getting, uh, the audit, uh, finished up, and we are in full swing preparing departmental budgets, uh, for submission and trying to start the, uh, foundation of that two thousand twenty-one budget. Um, the Police Department has, uh, been working, uh, some, uh, property crimes lately. Um, just a reminder to everyone that even though we live in a small community, it's, uh, a lot of these are crimes of opportunity, so it's unlocked, uh, vehicles that are being targeted, so please lock your vehicles if you're not in them. Uh, the golf course continues to see increased play. Um, a lot of people out enjoying. Additionally, the trail on top of the levee also is being heavily utilized right now. It's great to see the people out. Uh, the golf course will be closing next week for aerification. Uh, we're working with Halsted Fire to do a controlled burn on some of the natural grasses out there. And then the clubhouse project is just about wrapped up, hopefully, um, as the contractor schedule allows. They're kind of in the final, uh, checkoff list of getting things, uh, buttoned down before we'll call that complete, but it is ninety-five percent done and, and looks good, so if anyone, uh, or once these social distancing guidelines are lifted, and we're letting people in the clubhouse, uh, can't wait to see you guys all out there to view that. Um, as far as public works, the street ceiling project continues. Uh, no one should see them in town the next couple of days, uh, due to weather. They are postponing, but they plan to be back Wednesday or Thursday, uh, to continue their work on that. Uh, the, uh, staff continues to install gas and water services, assisted parks and recreation, uh, removing a dugout at the Softball Diamond. Um, and then have been working on meter reading. And then in Parks and Recreation, uh, Utility Maintenance Contractors is going to be out in the next couple of weeks to finish that painting project, uh, that they previously did the sandblasting on, and then, uh, Fort Director Williams just expresses thanks. Uh, we have not had a lot of issues with the barricades around the playground equipment being taken down or anything, so uh, really thankful or appreciate that all residents are complying with and understand why we have that blocked off for the public safety. And other than that, uh, worked on finishing up, um, submissions for our Safe Road to School Phase One grant. Um, got that sent in, and also hopefully just about finished up with the process on the grant for storm sirens. And other than that, a lot of us have been attending many, many Zoom meetings, uh, related to, uh, COVID-nineteen and the continuing situation we all find ourselves in, so if you, uh, call and can't get ahold of someone, I bet you they're probably on another phone line at a meeting.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ethan, for that. Uh, I guess in my excitement to make my Arbor Day proclamation, I forgot to let the rest of the council weigh in on, on the report section, so I'll give you all an opportunity now. We'll start with you, Councilwoman Clausen.
Right, I do have one question. This is for Jamie. Um, I believe that we, I saw last week something on Facebook where you needed volunteers to, um, deliver meals. Is that correct?
It's for the senior center.
Okay, did they get enough volunteers to do that?
I am not sure. The last I heard, they received one person. I don't know how many they've had that contacted them directly.
Okay.
Thank you, Denise. Now I will move to you, Councilman Farmer. Do you have anything you'd like to report on tonight?
This, uh, this would be more of a governing body statement, but I tell you what, uh, living in Halsted and looking at the city, being involved in the city over the last couple of weeks, the gratitude that we should have for the grocery store, the hardware store, the signage company, all the businesses we have on Main Street, we need to protect and support those businesses so that they're here in the future, should this ever happen again. It's invaluable.
I concur completely. Councilman Wallace?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask, um, in the last few budgets and all that I've been a part of, there's one key thing that I've always asked is what equipment do we have out there that needs to be, that needs to be fixed and repaired? Um, just things were brought to light. Um, what I've asked is that maybe, uh, Mayor Travis and Ethan, maybe we did a good hard look at what equipment that we've got, aging equipment, what repairs needs to be done. And like I asked before at budget, you know, put together that list, bring it to council, you know, if it's, if it's exceeding your expending power so that we can get some of the equipment fixed.
I'm sure Mr. Reimer will make a note of that, and, uh, him and I will discuss that. So we'll move on to you, Councilman Torres. The floor is yours.
We've also had the same discussions around this home and amongst other citizens that, uh, being thankful for, again, the grocery store and the, uh, uh, the hardware store and the other businesses, and as, uh, Mr. Farmer said, uh, we need to look at doing business here as much as we can. Uh, if it happens down the road, we have these companies to serve, serve us, and we can, uh, um, visit them and do business with them.
Uh, definitely appreciate you echoing the comments, George. I do think every one of our local businesses is very important. Move on to you, Councilman Campbell.
I only have one comment, and that is a number of citizens have have expressed gratitude over the street work that was being done right now, and the patching, the seal coating, uh, that got started even ear- I mean, early as it is now. Um, but it's very well appreciated by the citizens.
All right, thank you, Ed. Well, we have finished our agenda tonight. Everybody's had a chance to comment. Uh, so I guess the only thing left for me to do is ask for a motion for adjournment.
So, Torres.
Do we have a second?
Second, Campbell.
And can Jamie figure that out and re-
Move myself, okay. Motion by Councilmember Torres to adjourn at seven forty-six PM with a second by Councilmember Campbell.
We'll do the roll call vote, and Councilwoman Clausen.
Aye.
Councilman Farmer.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace. Councilman Torres.
Aye.
And Councilman Campbell.
Aye.
Thank you, council. We are adjourned. Appreciate your patience while we work through the technological aspects of how we have to conduct our meetings now.
Got my cord again.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.